Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, July 3rd, 2023, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councillor Reed.
Here.
Councillor Hesman.
Here.
Councillor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Councillor President Starr.
Here.
Councillor Duran.
Here.
Councillor Cross.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, I would invite you to rise and all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for joining us between a holiday weekend and a holiday. And I think that this is a very appropriate time to honor two people in our community who have made a significant difference both personally and professionally for many, many years. Literacy is the foundation of freedom, and John Goodyear and B.J. Toey have made their careers their lifelong professional and volunteer careers on providing opportunities for literacy to our communities, both in service in Salem, our region, and now in Kaiser. We received two letters of nomination for B.J. and John to be recognized as Volunteer of the Quarter, and it's truly a pleasure to do exactly that. I got to know B.J. when my children were little, and I would go down to the Salem Public Library on a very regular basis to participate in the toddler reading times, to get books for our homeschooling curriculum, and to find out where all sorts of great resources were available for a young family of four that were trying to find resources that we could use to enhance our children's education. It was with great joy that she shared all the resources with us, and any other family walked through the door and made every child, every adult feel very welcome there, and has brought that same expertise here to Kaiser in the growing number of children and teen and adult reading programs we have right here in the Kaiser Community Library. I met John when we were doing a library card day. We brought together the Salem Public Library, Kaiser Community Library, and CCRLS, the Schmeckata Cooperative Regional Library System, together, so people in our community could meet people from all three that serve the people of Kaiser. And it was such a joy to get to meet John and understand the work that he was doing to make our region top-notch for getting not only books and materials to people, but also to increase efficiencies and improve the operation and the access to whatever materials people wanted to get, again, for their own personal pleasure, their personal development, for professional development, and so much more. John and B.J., you could have just retired and sailed off and cruised all over the world, but you chose instead to join in with our wonderful Kaiser Community Library. You have dedicated hours, yeah, years of incredible work to make it the best it can be, to find ways forward, to improve it, and to include more and more kids and families and seniors in the program that we have available. I just admire both of you tremendously. I am proud to call you my friends. Ladies and gentlemen, our Volunteers of the Quarter, B.J. Toey and John Goodyear. Thank you. Appreciate you guys so much. This is the sense of share of home because 3:00 o'clock?
Wonderful. We can do that.
You can do that.
The three of us.
Yes. Push it in the middle.
Okay, ready, set.
Ready, set.
I thought it was a stretch. There we go. Thank you very much.
Do you want to say a few words about the community library, which you have here? I would love to give you an opportunity.
We need to sit? Is that the?
The microphone needs to hear you for television.
Okay.
And this is the box in case you.
Thank you.
We have been working with Kaiser Community Library for almost three years now and have been trying very hard to find a way to move it into public library status and to make it become a part of CCRLS. And I think it's too early to give up on that notion. I think that that should still be in our future, that the people who live here deserve a public library right in their own town. So it's been an honor to work with the wonderful volunteers that keep Kaiser Community Library running right now, and I hope to see them working with a professional librarian down the road as a full-time staff member. So that's my aspiration.
This library is so close to being able to get there. It's doing everything it needs to do. It just doesn't meet a couple of targets. And I hope that the community can get it together to reach those targets in the future and become a full library.
Well, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your hard work and your expertise, and just thanks for being great members of our community. Thank you, B.J. Thank you, John.
It's been our pleasure.
Okay. So to talk about our Kaiser Community Library, let's go to Barbara Minor. There's stuff happening all the time this summer, isn't there?
There is stuff happening, and I'd like to come and bring city council good news. I have nothing to complain about. The city library, the summer program for at the city, at the Kaiser Community Library is up and running. Last week, B.J. led book bingo on the back patio. Forty-eight kids, twenty-six adults attended, and every kid became a winner in Tacoma-free book. Those kids also, those families, many of them went up and saw the art gallery at the museum. Some of them went to Splash Fountain, and a few were carrying skateboards. So it's a, it's a good summer family event. We have these events on the patio every Wednesday, usually at 3:00 tomorrow, Wednesday the 6th, Wednesday the 5th. We have a fabulous juggler open to all and free. You're welcome to come. The whole list of events is on our webpage, kaiserlibrary.org. We also have more than 100 kids signed up for a summer book club, and we had to have an emergency order of graphic novels for junior-age kids because our shelf was wiped out, and we added 90 early reader books last week because about half of our early reader books had been checked out by kids who are going to be first graders, and they're going to spend the summer getting ready for that.
Thank you so much. And every single teacher wants their kids to come back ready to read in the fall, so summer reading programs are critical for keeping students on that par, actually improving over the summer. And my kids always did summer reading programs. I think there was pizza involved, something like that. Hey, a little bribe, whatever works. All right. Thank you so much. We will now go to public comment before we go to the folks who have signed up. I do want to acknowledge written comment for the record. There is an email from Carol Allen, resident of Kaiser, summer concerts, and Cory is here tonight, talked about that. Amanda Robinson, resident of Kaiser, B. City USA. I put her in touch with our environmental division, and they are now communicating on opportunities for doing work with pollinators in our community. The Kaiser Chamber of Commerce, process to hire Kaiser's next police, chief of police. Thank you for your input and your concern and support for all of our businesses. Samantha Irvin, resident of Kaiser, an incident at Meadows Park, and that has been referred to our police department for follow-up. So with that, I will go to public comment. This time is provided for citizens to adjust the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. One, item 7A, are two resolutions that are adopting land use fees relating to partitions of subdivisions, and then land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions. The second is an ordinance declaring a lenigis property located at 1551 Seberg Street. So if you're here for one of those, please stay tuned. At this time, though, I would invite up Rhonda Rich to address us from West Kaiser Neighbors Association. And friends.
I need to sit down since I got the mic here. My name is Rhonda Rich. I'm president of the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, and I'm here tonight representing the board members of the association. I'm Chris Adams, who's vice president, Carol Phillips, who's on the board, and Carol Dorkler, who's.
Past president.
Almost on the board.
Almost, yeah. We're getting her back. And what we're, we'd like to do tonight, since it's Tracy's last night, her last city council meeting, I guess, we just want to say how much we've appreciated her work. She's, she's a very special person. We're going to really miss her. I came on the board at 2006 is when we reactivated the neighborhood association, so it's been about half that, the years that you've been here. I was thinking, that's a long time, and you're too young to retire, but, but. But Tracy's always been there for us, and, and when we moved into the chambers here, she was just, I mean, she was like our mother. She was just kind of making sure everything's perfect, you know, the room's set up and everything. I mean, she just, and, and I know she did it for a couple of years before you got somebody on permanently, and always with a smile. It wasn't like, oh, gosh, you know, I gotta do this, you know, because, because it is time-consuming, you know, it's a challenge, but she's always, I think like the Kaiser Times said, you know, you keep the people, you know, involved with the government, and, and so this is really on behalf of the community in general, too, the, the neighborhood associations that you've helped along the way. So we just wish you the best, and we'll look forward to working with Melissa and just lay out on the beach and have fun.
I can personally deliver these, so you don't have to.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyway, I'm humbled, and it's been an honor to serve all the people of Kaiser, so thank you.
Thank you.
And now would be the appropriate time to let Tracy know we have another surprise in store. Tracy is an absolute consummate professional as a city recorder. She has made a difference both in our own city, but also in cities in Oregon, especially when disaster strikes, but also across the nation. But on top of that, the community center was not something in her position description when it came up, but Tracy's gift of hospitality, of warmth, and welcoming people to have people come and feel like they're at home here. We call our lobby area the living room for a reason. This is our home for our city, and as such, a bench in front of the community center will be, have a plaque for Tracy Davis. I was going to invite anybody else who would like to take this opportunity to come up and just say something to, please, come on up. I have to be at the microphone so television can hear you. I'm sorry. You need to be at the microphone so the people on television can hear you.
After you collected them, but before you started the meeting.
Okay, come on up.
I just have a public concern.
Absolutely. Go ahead and have a seat and just state your name and your city of residence for the record. Turn it back on. Now it's on.
My name is Bill Kreitzer. I live here in Kaiser, have for over 10 years. Love the city. But in this recent building of the apartment complex down there on Verda and Tumawa, I just wanted to mention that if you're going up from this direction up Tumawa and turn onto Verda, their first driveway is before the turnabout ends. And when you're looking left to watch traffic come around and you're. And when you're looking left to watch traffic come around and you're going into the circle, I think it lends itself to a possibility of a little collision there. I'd like that last, that first driveway looked at to make sure that it complies with whatever rules you've set forth. But it just looks like it's going to be a venue for future consideration under its current circumstance. Were you aware of that?
Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The northernmost access into the apartment complex is an emergency access only, which will be gated and not open for public use. That was something that was worked out through the, the design review and planning of that complex. The very main entrance into it will be across from May Street. And then a southern one down around Dixon will be a write-in, write-out-only access. But that northern one is a gated, emergency-only access.
Okay, that, that alleviates my concern, at least for the moment.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing that to us. Appreciate it. I would invite anyone else who would like to speak before I invite up Cory Filardo. All right. Thank you so much. Since we are, before I call up Cory, I would like to give counselors who would like to say a few words to or about or for our dear friend Tracy. And I'll start down at the end, Councilor Cross. Sorry, I caught you just on time.
You did. I can't just thank you enough. You're so sweet. And just from the time last year when I was contacting you and getting the petition, like you've always been just this ray of sunshine. So I'm glad you get to bathe in the sunshine you love so much.
Councilor Duran.
I too want to thank you for everything that you've done. You know, when I started Planning Commission, you were, you know, instrumental in helping me, you know, get the information I needed, and I appreciate that. And then when I went to run for city council, you helped me tremendously, just giving me information. And I, you know, since I've been on city council, having you get everything ready for us and make everything available to us has just been, you know, tremendously important for me. You've made things much easier for me to get things done, so I appreciate it. Thank you, Tracy.
Council President Starr.
I don't, yeah. Thank you doesn't seem enough. I hope that you leave your time here knowing how valued and appreciated you are. You are the rock of so much in this building that makes a city go and make it run. I just am so appreciative, so appreciative of, I don't know that you have the word no in your vocabulary, because you have always answered my calls, I think on the first ring. I don't know that they've ever gone to the second. And you've never said no. It's always, but I'll get, I'll figure that out and get right back to you. Let me figure that out. I will. And that has just been such a relief to know that if there's a question or a need, we can just call Tracy. So thank you for all you've done and all you've given, and enjoy your little grands.
They're growing, too. Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Davis. I don't recall a time when I've needed something done that I didn't say, Tracy, can you, can you help me figure this out? And it's like, oh, yeah, it's easy. Here, look at this. It's been pretty amazing. And then, oh, we have this conference we're supposed to go to. How do we get that taken care of? Oh, I'll take care of that. And guess what? It is. And so, nothing that we've needed that I can think of, that we've asked you to do, has not been done with a smile. And that means a lot. I, I think of all the things that I'm asked to do as a city councillor, and I couldn't do most of them without what you've done, so I appreciate that a lot. I hope that you're able to find lots of beaches to go spend time on, whether it's Oregon coast or something that is sunnier.
A little warmer.
And I understand that, too. But when I, when I first came on council, Tracy said to me, well, what kind of soda do you drink? And I said, you know, I, I don't drink soda very often, but when I do, I'd like to drink something that's kind of expensive, so you don't have to do that. And she goes, well, what is it? And I said, well, it's, it's Henry Weinhardt's cream soda. And she goes, but I said, you don't have to do that. She goes, okay. I'll, and the next week it was sitting there. And apparently, a lot of people like it because it goes pretty quickly.
You have good taste.
But thank you for all the extra time and effort you put in. I call your cell phone, and you answer it, and that means a lot. Thank you for always taking care of us.
Thank you. Councilor Housman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Davis, there is a lot of dignity, grace, and empathy that not only goes into the city recorder position in such a public-facing and privately hectic arena, but that you have infused into it within the city of Kaiser and understood in our short relationship that a lot of that goes quietly. So I'd like to think I speak for the rest of the city in saying that it's great that we can make some noise tonight. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So recently, for the 40th birthday, we asked you to pull a list of all the former councillors and mayors, and, and I think there were 45 of them, I think, or 650? Yes, anyway. And that, that, it, it just was, brought to my attention that you have worked with most of those. And not only worked with, but, but got to know on an individual level and really appreciated anticipating everybody's needs, being patient with those who nobody else might have patience for, and just really being just a, a good friend in addition to, you know, you don't see them just as councillors or, or staff, you see them as individuals. And with that, you were able to anticipate needs that sometimes we don't even know we have. So again, the, the way that you have kept things running in such an orderly and impressive fashion, I just really, really appreciate it, and we have been so honored and lucky to have you.
And finally, from Mayor Christopher, who's not in town at the moment, but she knew that she could always count on you. She knew that she could call you and say, hey, Trace, so. And then follow up with what needs to be done. And that reliability and the kindness that went with it, she also wanted to let you know meant the world to her as well, and that she also wishes you the very best in your retirement, which all of us know retired doesn't mean that you're going to be just kicking back. Retirement means tired again, just doing something else that you choose. So Tracy Davis, thank you for your service to Kaiser, for all of us, and all the best in your retirement years and with your family. Thank you, Tracy Davis.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And anyway, former city councillors in the audience, and anyway, she promised me she wasn't going to say anything. Anyway, we both knew what would happen. But anyway, I have truly enjoyed serving you and making your lives easier and friendships that I've made. Like I said, my work family means a whole lot, and that's probably the, the most difficult thing to leave this place with, not being able to see all of you and all the people in the audience. Anyway, I have a great replacement here. Melissa's been here for a week now, and I know she will serve you with grace and dignity and continue on that. So anyway, I'm very thankful for everything that the city has allowed me to do. So I've learned, grown. Anyway, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And welcome, Melissa. We're so happy to have you on board and looking forward to a long and enjoyable time together. Thank you. So let's wrap up this public comment time with Cory Filardo. Let's talk about concerts, because if one thing Kaiser loves to do is party, and we love our music.
I have something to share about Tracy really quick. Sorry. It was a really sweet story. It was when I first started at the chamber, and it was my first Christmas holiday giving. And I swore, and I was talking to Tracy, and I said, I, I promise I love Jesus. And she says, it's okay, I do too, and sometimes you just can't help it. I think about that all the time, like, that's my girl. Thank you for being so understanding and just, you just have this way of like normalizing for everyone you come across, and I just so appreciate that. And the comfortability you made me feel, being so new in this, this big job that this little girl had. And I just appreciate your love and support and coming along and all that good stuff. So thank you. And I do love Jesus, but I do swear. Anyways, yeah, I'm here to talk about, you know, I'm me. What can I say, unapologetically?
To thy own self be true, Cory.
That's right. I'm here to talk about concerts in the park. Contrary to some of those popular beliefs, there are going to be concerts in the park this summer, and the Kaiser Chamber is putting them on. There is one coming up here pretty quick on July 14. It's going to be with McNary APT Program, which is the McNary Audio Production and Technology Program, and it's led by Andy Thomas. And there's some fabulous kiddos that are going to come out and sing, and then it's going to end with the band Flight. I'm not sure if any of you've heard of them, but they're pretty fantastic. And then the headlining band is called Rhythm and Business, and they've played a few times down there and at Kaiser Fest, and I'm super stoked that they're going to be the headlining band that night. And this band is, this concert is really special to us because we're going to be able to give a pretty good donation to the McNary APT Program at the end of the night. So we're super pumped and looking forward to it to help them get a little bit closer to those big purchases for their program. And that is, the charge is led by Brad Benton, who's the drummer for Rhythm and Business. So super looking forward to that. So make sure you put on your calendar, July 14, the, the, excuse me, the amphitheater's going to open at 4:00 PM. Food trucks will be available. We'll have North Kaiser BBQ, Sancho's Tacos, and Gracie's Sweets and Treats. And Ratchet Brewery will be serving up beer and wine. So doors will open at 4:00 PM. The show will start at 5:30, so you'll have time to get food and enjoy being with each other, coming and going, enjoying the sun. And then the music will start at 5:30. And then, huge surprise, Kaiser Fest is also coming, but I'm going to fast-forward over that for tonight, and then jump to August 26, which is another concert in the park that the chamber is putting on, which is our beloved JFK End of the Summer Concert. So JFK will be in the, in the amphitheater, August 26. And that will also open at 4:00 PM, but the show will start at 5:30. There'll be food trucks. Sandy and Brewing will be serving up beer and wine. Food trucks are still to be determined, but we'll be out there having a good time. Expect to come a little early so you can get your seats. That show is always super full. But we are fixing to have a great summer out at the amphitheater. There are going to be concerts in the park, so please come and join in.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. They are on my calendar. Thank you so much. And then you'll get us an update on Kaiser Fest here in a couple of weeks.
That's right.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We will now then go to our first public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. For resolution adopting land use fees relating to partitions and subdivisions, repealing resolution R. 2016-2678, and resolution adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions, repealing resolution R. 2019-2963. Been here so long, we're repealing my resolutions. With that, Mr. Witham.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Yeah, so tonight, what we have is we have a whole big list of fees. Basically, we, we had to establish a fee for expedited land divisions and associated appeals. Staff, I, had errantly understood that those were covered by our already established fee for expedited reviews, but then our legal department found this issue and said, hey, we need a fee for this. We don't have a fee for that, so we have to do that. In doing that, staff thought it was appropriate to kind of look at the fees and see where we were at. These fees have not been updated since 2016 in any way, shape, or form. It's Planning Commission in both May and in June, and had public hearings on the fees. We are proposing essentially, there, there's a couple little nuances, but the gist of it is, is we, we did some research, included in the packet, it's what we shared with Planning Commission. There's not a, there's not a normal anywhere around. It's kind of all over the place. What is consistent is Kaiser's fees are low. And even with the proposed increase, Kaiser's fees continue to be low, lower than basically everywhere else. However, I did not personally feel that I had enough data to say, oh, these fees should be a, a much greater rate like some of the other cities. What I was very confident with is that I know that we haven't updated the fees since 2016. Back in 2014, previous staff had done an analysis of some of the time it takes to process these different applications, and they established fees in 2014 and then adjusted them in 2016. And so what we're proposing is simply an increase to cover the cost of living increases for wages that have happened since 2016 until now, which ends up being a 20.5% increase, which sounds really huge. And at first, I kind of was like, oh, I'm excited. Maybe I've solved all of the city's budgeting concerns for the future. We crunched some numbers. That's not the case, unfortunately. It really, it's, Tim just shakes his head, but you know, this is a non, non-finance guy. So, so realistically, it, it's not a, a big uptick in our revenue generation. There's a few options that we, we outlined for you. Planning Commission recommended approval of these fees as we brought. There is one that we upped, and that was a legal lot determination fee. It had previously been like $75 forever, but that gets done by our legal department. And so I chatted with them and said, hey, and we haven't done a ton of them, but we do them every once in a while with, there's an odd property. They've got to pull title chain and do all this research. And so we looked at that, and we're proposing that fee to be increased pretty substantially. But it matches up with our final Mylar review fee, because we felt like that was kind of a comparative on the amount of work that goes into it and the time. The other thing, you know, there's, there's two separate resolutions. I kind of wanted to point this out. Not all fees require us to have a public hearing on them. Only the subdivision and partitioning fees by state statute requires that. However, we felt it was appropriate, if we were going to adjust the fees, that we would just bring them all for really the, the sake of giving opportunity, being as transparent as we can be, to say, hey, here's the fees and here's what we're doing. So that's the other thing I did kind of want to point out. There's two separate resolutions because some of them go into that category, the others go into the other category. I think with that, I'd be happy to answer or try to answer any of your questions that you have.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And the recommendation from Planning Commission was, what was the vote?
Correct. It was unanimous.
Unanimous, okay. Thank you. I'll look for questions on the staff report or the proposed ordinance from councillors. Councilor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. About how many permits do we average a month or a year for the last couple of years?
So with, well, building permits are different, and we're not proposing any changes to building permits. Those are kind of handled through Marion County. So with the land use fees, I think in last year's budget, we put, we put that So with the land use fees, I think in last year's budget, we put, we put that chart in the budget and I think it was like 17 or 18 land use applications that we processed last year.
Thank you. So that didn't solve the budgetary issues?
Correct.
All right. Anyone else before I call on Tammy Coons, Councilor Husband?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Witham, since you have them in there regarding the middle housing land division new fees, do you mind just speaking to basically what the middle housing initiatives created for the city with regard to differentiation in the planning department's job and the need for some of the fee structure?
Sure, sure. Yeah, and I'll, I'll try to be really high level, like maybe 30,000 foot look. Yeah, essentially there was a slew of changes that really all cities around Oregon had to make to allow for middle housing, which are essentially duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage cluster. And townhouses are grouped in there too. We already allowed those, but there's some different standards. And essentially there was a House bill that came through and said, hey, for our city, we've got to allow all of these things wherever we would allow a single family dwelling to be allowed. And it was about a year long project that we went through. Planning Commission did some great work. It came to you all. You did some great work. It was a pretty heavy lift, but essentially we had to update all of our codes to allow greater flexibility for those middle housing types. Basically what happened after it got passed and went through a rulemaking and there was kind of a sister bill, Senate Bill 458 that got thrown in that created this ability to divide these through middle housing land divisions. And I think the, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit funky because it's a land use decision that's not a land use decision. It's very confusing, but basically it says, hey, if you go and you build a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex or cottage cluster, then as a city, we have to allow a owner to come in and separate those under ownership. There's, they're not a true partitioning or a subdividing in the classic sense, but it does allow for separate ownership. And I think the intent of the bill was to create maybe a little bit lower entry point for some homeownership options that haven't historically been available to folks. And that's, and that's really, I guess the big thing I would just reiterate is that I know it's a big increase and I know that can be sensitive or it seems like a big increase. It's really not a big increase when you look at the amount that it goes up because our fees have been so low. I mean, 20% of $400 isn't that much. But we, we really have to adopt fees for the middle housing stuff. That was the onus to look at it at all. And, you know, I know there was, there was some years, you know, frankly, Planning Commission asked, is there a way, shouldn't we just be indexing these every years with the cost of living? And can't actually do that. That's not how it works. So me being fairly new in my role, I talked to legal and some other folks and said, yeah, how, how often have we looked at these historically? Because I don't really ever remember being a part of looking at these and I've worked here a really long time. And they were like, yeah, we probably should look at them every three to five years realistically. So that's something that moving forward, I will be planning on keeping a better track of that and knowing what's happening with our fees. But yeah, hopefully that answers your middle housing question.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Witham. Thank you. You know, I, I think it's just beneficial to have that background on the public record because a lot of terminology, Senate bills, House bills, facts, all change at a rapid pace. And sometimes I, I worry that people don't necessarily keep up and constituent questions have come to, I know a few of us of, so what exactly did or did not change? So I, I appreciate that out there for the record. And Madam Mayor, if I may add just a little editorial comment?
Well, if this deliberation, press pause because we want to bring up public comment?
I'll press pause. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to bring up Tammy Coons to speak on this issue.
Is this on? Yes. Okay. Couple of questions, Shane.
Oh, and just to state your name and city residence to get on the record.
Tammy Coons, Kaiser.
All right, go.
Is this going to affect any of the lots that are currently under the old stuff or will this increase? I've had some concerns from the older folks in a couple of the mobile homes. And with, when they read it, they were like, does that mean I'm going to be taxed more? I don't know those answers.
Sure. I don't know, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know that I can answer that 100% accurately. What I can tell you is so the fees that we're talking about here would be the fees that a property owner would pay upfront to get the land use approval. Say they have a large property and they want to divide it into multiple properties. They would pay that fee at the time of that application. So it's the, the processing part of it. If you're already in an established area, you're not, you're not going through a new land use approval. So theoretically that shouldn't have any effect on them.
Okay. Next, is that going to, am I really loud? Is that going to make any changes for, like I know Gupsar has a new mini mobile home park going in. They've got the circle cleared. We have a couple of mobile homes going in where we are. Will that impact those families or just where those ones are moving into? The demolition and then the setup of the new one?
Right, yeah. I think, I mean, for, for, in your location specifically, it for sure would not change because that's going to be a placement permit through the building permit. I think the one in Gupsar you're talking about is on the one on Tepper?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually a subdivision. So they actually got that approved a couple of years ago. So it's just, it takes process. So they're, they're not going to have, these new fees aren't going to apply to them. I mean, theoretically, if they went in, I have heard, although I haven't seen, I've heard they're intending to do middle housing on those lots, build some duplexes, I believe. So theoretically, if they came in after they built those and said, oh, now we want to divide them, these new fees, which we don't currently have established for middle housing land divisions, those would apply to just that particular step of the process if they chose to do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Great questions. That's all I had signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this matter this evening? Okay, before we go deliberation, are there any other clarifying questions that anybody wants to ask before I close it? Seeing none? Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr, would you put the first motion on the table and then we can deliberate?
I move the City Council adopt resolution R 2023, adopting land use fees relating to partitions and subdivisions and repealing resolution R 2016-2678.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2023, adopting land use fees relating to partitions and subdivisions repealing resolution R 2016-2678. Okay, deliberation. And Councilor Husband, you had a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll be brief. Mr. Witham, Mr. Johnson as well, since it sounds like you were involved with this. Thank you for your diligent work on this. It, it's a lot to sort through and the Planning Commission as well should be commended for working through this. I, I find these changes sensical and understandable and rooted in the realities that the city is facing, which is what we should be doing with these, with these resolutions. I can already envision a request or a comment or two of, but won't this stunt development in Kaiser? Isn't this going to turn builders away? And I don't necessarily think that's the case. We have other developmental restrictions like Kaiser's height restriction that would theoretically crimp development more than what's going in here. And I, again, if you all have had meetings on this that I haven't, I'm, you know, I'm totally willing to confess to be in the dark, but that's a subject we certainly can broach for a later date.
And being a matter for public hearing, I don't believe any of us have had additional meetings on this issue. Many of us have been really tracking the issues around, it was a House Bill 2003, Mr. Witham? Was that the one that did the middle housing?
2001.
It was one, okay. And the opportunity for entree into home ownership is something we have discussed many times here. So looking for that opportunity to get home ownership within the reach of more and more families in our community that we know stabilizes families and also provides that entree into generational wealth building. So it's going to be good for our entire community in my opinion. So that's why I will be supporting this. I'm going to check with everybody else. Any other comments? Councilor Husband?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all for homeownership. I don't personally own a home. Would I love to own a home someday? Absolutely. So I, I will be supporting this bill as well. I simply wish to call attention to the fact that Kaiser has the capacity to take and can take all types, owners, renters, everyone. We, we talk a little bit about the continuum of care of transitional housing. That ultimately is a part of this discussion as well implicitly or otherwise. City of Kaiser, come as you can, right? In addition to pride, spirit and volunteerism, that could be the subhead.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Starr, would you please put the second motion on the table?
I move the City Council adopt resolution R 2023, adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions and repealing resolution R 2019-2963.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R 2023, adopting land use and sign permit fees unrelated to partitions and subdivisions repealing resolution R 2019-2963. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes the first of our two public hearings this evening. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance declaring a lien against property located at 1551 Seberg Street Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon, and directing the city recorder to enter such lien into the minor lien docket pursuant to ordinance number 94-282, nuisance abatement procedure declaring an emergency. Mr. Witham and Mr. Johnson, who goes first?
I think I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so this is, from our process perspective, this was a code enforcement activity and we ended up doing an abatement. I, I gave you kind of a lot of information and this was, this was a little bit of a mess. It, it had been a long time issue in Kaiser. 20 plus years ago, I dealt with this property and wrote tickets to a previous familial owner and my predecessor had done that when I was the code enforcement guy. It's been an ongoing, kind of ebbs and flows. We've done a few different small cleanups and ultimately the property had gotten to such a place of disarray and hazardous with the garbage and the trash. I included some pictures in your packet so you could see how bad it was, that we really had no choice but to go in there and, and clean it up. Our ordinance requires when we do these abatements that we come to council to basically say, hey, the statement of cost is correct and place the lien on the property. I did want to point out, if, if any of you went by and looked at it, it doesn't look good right now because we, we cleaned up the trash and there was still like some vehicles we needed to take care of. And there was a catastrophic house fire that literally happened, I believe, the day we sent out the bill that started the clock for them to be able to pay before we went to the lien. The good news was, is we, we were informed by the fire marshal that had we not done the cleanup, it was highly likely that two additional homes would have likely been lost in that fire. So we know that the property is already listed for sale. I've been getting calls on it left and right. So I think there is light at the end of the tunnel, but time is of the essence to make sure that this gets placed on the lien docket so that if it closes, we get paid. So that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but this really is just a formality piece that we do on these. I, I normally like to be able to bring you pictures that show how great we made it look. I don't have those pictures for this one because it looks worse than it ever did, frankly, because it's all burnt. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So you get the prize for one of the best words I've ever seen in a report and that's putrescible garbage. That was very well put. The other way, the shorter way is saying, it really stunk. So thank you very much for that. I have a property in my neighborhood that has been an ongoing issue and is finally being cleaned up as well. So I know how neighbors really appreciate when those are finally abated in a permanent manner, although nobody saw that one coming. So urban renewal? Anyway, I'm glad nobody was hurt. With that, any questions? Okay. Council President Starr, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have, we have, the hearing is open. I forgot, I almost jumped ahead. Thank you. I have nobody signed up to testify on this matter. Is anyone here who would like to testify on this matter for the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. Any further questions before I close the public hearing? Hearing none? Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr?
I move the City Council adopt ordinance number 2023, declaring a lien against property located at 1551 Seberg Street Northeast in Kaiser, Oregon, and directing the city recorder to enter such lien in the minor lien docket pursuant to ordinance number 94-282, nuisance, nuisance abatement procedure and declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance 2023, declaring a lien against property located at 1551 Seberg Street Northeast, Kaiser, Oregon, and directing the city recorder to enter such lien into, in the minor lien docket pursuant to ordinance number 94-282, nuisance abatement procedure declaring an emergency. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. And thank you for your great work and the entire team for getting that property as far along as you could. Look forward to that totally renewing. With that, we will now go to administrative action. Our first is an ordinance amending ordinance number 2020-812 prohibiting camping on sidewalks, public property and public rights of way, declaring an emergency. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This matters before council, the last amendment on June 20 and the ordinance did not pass unanimously, so it's here for a second reading. For the audience's sake, I'll briefly describe, due to federal case law and state statute, the city and other cities in Oregon cannot fully restrict any sleeping or resting by those experiencing homelessness. The ordinance amends our current ordinance and allows limited short-term camping or sleeping and resting in portions of certain rights of way. And that is set forth in the ordinance. And let me see if there's one more thing. I think I described again how this is the second reading. So it's up to the council on how you want to deal with it tonight and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that we spoke about this before, Shannon, but since we have, is there any other cities that have the 100 feet? I, I know that when we talked, I found the 500 feet and the 1,000 feet.
Correct.
But not the 100 feet.
No, I did not find another with 100 feet. I think there was a couple that might've been less than 500, but Hillsborough was at 500. I don't recall what Bend was, but there were some that were 1,000 and, and some that were 500.
Okay, I was the one no, though, last week and it really was about this 100 feet with, of any school or daycare facility. And I looked up since then on for Salem Kaiser students, they have to be over a mile to be eligible for the bus. So all those other kiddos are walking and I really feel like 1,000 feet is reasonable, being that a mile is 5,200 feet. So I would like to see these kids be able to walk to school with unobstruction on sidewalks. So that's what I would like to see in this amendment.
Thank you very much. So when we open this, put the motion on the table, that is something that you can bring up at that time. I do have a question for, it's either Mr. Witham or Mr. Johnson. The 1,000 feet from schools, that is in Kaiser, those are all pretty much, or are they all still included in residential areas or does that cross into other zones?
So we, all the schools are in residential zones or public zones, surrounded by residential zones. As far as the 1,000 foot, I did look at a few locations. We looked at a few different locations. And I believe that that, there might be a couple where that 1,000 feet would move into some of the commercial zones. So does that answer the question?
That's the answer I was looking for, yes. Was whether or not that was going to cross zones. And is that going to, the rights of way that are included in those zones? that are included in those zone areas, would those be rights of way? First of all, are there rights of way in those spaces? And two, are they ones that are not covered by the exceptions that we have in section C of the ordinance, which has, is prohibited to camp in those spaces such as stormwater, travel lanes, et cetera?
I might defer to Counselor Johnson to see if he wants to add. I know when I had looked at it, I actually questioned him on it, what the utility of the number was, just because I didn't see that it was getting us anything more. It was really already covered. I think the issue becomes, and again, I don't have a dynamic map that I can look at and do a bunch of measuring right at this moment, but I think obviously the wider that net gets casted, then the farther out those areas would be. There's fairly, the way the ordinance is structured, there's pretty, it's fairly limited as it is. So I don't know, Shannon, if you want to add to that.
Right. So Shane and I went over this a few weeks ago and looked at some maps and as he indicated, it's really impossible to say with certainty. You'd have to go each area and try to measure. Because of the restrictions set forth in that section and that section C on page two, as you pointed out, Madam Mayor, adjacent to residential zones, bike lanes, the five feet adjacent, there's very limited areas that would allow the camping. My concern with the 1,000, and I had indicated before, it's a matter, a little bit of perception, is that if we're too restrictive, it does increase our risk. And I had indicated, I thought 500, 500 feet would be more appropriate. It, my guess is there wouldn't be much difference between the two. Shane did point out, and I would think it'd be McNary probably, if you, if you went 1,000 feet, you theoretically would get to commercial areas. Those areas have such limited rights of way anyway that it probably wouldn't make a lot of difference. So it's really more one of perception. Does it look like we're being more restrictive at 1,000 than 500, maybe not? So if you can see my point there.
Well, there's the practical reality and then there's the perception of, you know, what this would actually do to the availability of spaces for this purpose. And at the end of the day, having people be in safe, secure, humane places is our ultimate goal. And being, you know, trying to lay down next to a roadway is not safe, humane for anybody. So a lot of what we've put in here is with that in mind, what is safe, humane, and decent for all the people involved, people who are experiencing homelessness and people in our community. And I think that a lot of that has gone into how this has been crafted. So we can get into this debate. Let's go ahead and put the motion on the table and let's go ahead and debate. And there's other issues that people want to debate on this. It sounds like this will be the primary one for our discussion. Council President Starr?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt ordinance number 2023, amending ordinance number 2020-812, prohibiting camping on sidewalks, public property, and public rights of way and declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, amending ordinance number 2020-812, prohibiting camping on sidewalks, public property, and public rights of way, declaring an emergency. And do I need to say something about this as a second reading, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And upon second reading. I don't know if this was seldom, I have to ask. All right. With that, Counselor Cross, did you want to put a proposal on there for us to either accept or to debate?
Yeah, I would like a friendly amendment for it to be 1,000 feet and not 100 feet when it comes to a school or daycare.
Okay. Does it move or accept?
I don't accept the 1,000 feet.
Okay. Counselor Cross, did you want to put that as a motion for a vote? So if it's not a friendly amendment, you can also put it out there as a motion and then we would have to get a second and vote on that amendment?
Sure, I'd put it out for a motion for a vote.
Okay, so you would like to move amending the ordinance in section?
I would like to move to amend the ordinance in section C?
C four.
C four, from 100 feet of any school or daycare facility to 1,000 feet.
Looking for a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Any other changes? Okay. All in favor of the original motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no?
No.
Motion passes 6-1, with the no being Counselor Cross on second reading. All right, thank you very much. That takes us then to item 8B, which is an ordinance, amending relating, an ordinance, amending the ordinance relating to the regulation of fireworks within the city of Kaiser, amending ordinance number 2022-851, declaring an emergency. Mr. Johnson?
That certainly is wordy, Madam Mayor and Council.
Tripped me up.
This matter came before council, I believe, at the last meeting and at that time, council passed the ordinance that was in front of you dealing with an allowance for extended hours for professional fireworks, mainly for the volcanoes fireworks, which they normally do. At that time, it was discovered that the other section dealing with the red flag warning probably needed to be amended because of the red flag warning, there shouldn't be an allowance for those fireworks. And so we prepared an amendment for that one and as you can see by the staff report, it basically repeats that section dealing with red flag warnings, but deletes the current section that says it doesn't apply to those authorized by permit from the state fire marshal pursuant to state statute and that's the professional fireworks permit one. So that removes that, which is, I think, what was supposed to happen initially anyway. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on this one more fix? All right, thank you very much, Council President Starr?
I move that the council adopt ordinance number 2023, amending ordinance relating to the regulation of fireworks within the city of Kaiser, amending ordinance number 2022-851 and declaring an emergency.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, 2023, amending ordinance relating to the regulation of fireworks within the city of Kaiser, amending ordinance number 2022-851, declaring an emergency.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. And under staff dates, we can visit with Chief Teague on how this is working, which I'm hearing good reports from my neighborhood. Let's go to item 8C, which is a community center fee waiver, Boy Scouts of America, the Ed Harris Memorial Trade O'Ree. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council. The city has received a request from the Ed Harris Auction Committee from the Boy Scouts of America Cascade Pacific Council. And they're requesting a fee waiver for their auction on October 6th and 7th. And the total cost to the city of this fee waiver is a refundable deposit of $1,150, a facility use fee of $2,600. Included in that $2,600 is approximately $355 of staff costs. At this point, you have several options. You can waive all of the fees or you can waive some of the fees. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over and you folks can do your deliberations. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report before I go to Counselor Kohler? See none, Counselor Kohler? Do you want to? Citizen Kohler, yes.
Hello, my name is Dan Kohler, residing Kaiser. The Ed Harris Memorial Auction, it's a memorabilia auction. There's a bunch of crazy people that collect and distribute scouting memorabilia. And the council uses the Ed Harris Memorial Trade O'Ree as a fundraiser for scholarships for young men and women that would like to go to scout camp and could not otherwise afford it. Ed Harris was a pretty interesting guy. He loved scouting, he loved patches, he loved to use the patches as a means to raise money. And so he would order several hundred patches and he would sell them for $15 apiece or 20 bucks or even $100 apiece in order to raise funds for young men and then young men to be able to do things. That Scouts USA, which is officially, I think, what it is now, is, has extended all that to young men and young women. And so by having the Trade O'Ree here in Kaiser, it makes it very centrally located for a lot of people. The location that we've used in the past wasn't big enough to really put this on. We ask that the fees for this be waived. The staff report indicates that, that we are and we are willing to pay for the staff, although last year when we held this, there was a fee of about $200, I believe. And there was a generous citizen that donated that $200 so that the, the fees wouldn't, wouldn't reduce the number of scholarships we've been able to put out. So any, any reduction in fees would be appreciated and will allow more kids to be able to go to camp.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Kohler? All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing, oh, Counselor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just looked over my left shoulder and there was an empty chair. Citizen Kohler, do you mind just describing your role for the benefit of the public record for this? AKA why you have deserted your wonderful post?
Mayor Clark, Counselor Housman. The, I've been on the Ed Harris Memorabilia Committee for probably 15 years and my involvement in scouting goes back well over 50 years. The ability for a young person to be able to learn what life is and get a leg up on helping to develop a person into a full-fledged citizen that is an asset rather than a liability at a younger age, we appreciate the, my involvement with the Ed Harris at this location is that I saw a need and I saw a wonderful facility that we had and a way that we could enhance the scholarships and the service to our young people.
Quick follow-up, what's your favorite badge?
In which division?
Where does your heart lead you?
I was the district eagle chairman for over 15 years for the Lamont District, which meant that I reviewed and approved or disapproved eagle projects and then did eagle board reviews for several hundred young men in that, well, probably even 1,000. Even for some people that are sitting here, children today. So my involvement with scouting is, is something that means a lot to me and to be able to help more young people is my way to give back.
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to us, we appreciate it. Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table for us?
I move the city council approve the requested waiver of the community center facility use fees of $2,600, including the refundable deposit of $1,150, but charge $355 for staffing costs for the October 6th and October 7th Ed Harris Memorial Trade O'Ree.
Second?
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no? You voted, right?
No.
Are you abstentions? Motion passes with 6 aye and 1 abstention and that is Counselor Kohler. Thank you very much. Looking forward to this event coming to Kaiser. Our last item under our administrative action tonight is item 8D, which is a fee waiver for the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Concert in the Park. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council. As the Kaiser Chamber previously announced that we are going to have a concert in the park this year. The Kaiser Chamber of Commerce is requesting a fee waiver for a youth concert and big band concert at Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater on July 14th. And it's going to go from 4 o'clock to 9 PM. The concert is a collaboration between the Kaiser Chamber, Rhythm and Business, which if you didn't know is a Tower of Power cover band. Makes me think of former Counselor Herrera and the McNary Audio Production Technology Program. The concert is free to the public with food and beverages available for purchase. The net proceeds from the concert, as indicated before, will be donated to the McNary APT program for additional equipment purchases. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to you. You can waive some of the fees, all of the fees or none of the fees.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the request with the staff report? Council President Starr, put a motion on the table?
I move the city council approve a waiver of the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater use fees, application fee and refundable deposit for the July 14th, 2023 Concert in the Park.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve a waiver of fees for the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater use fee, application fee, and refundable deposit for the July 14th, 2023 Concert in the Park. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no? Hearing no objection. Motion passes unanimously. Let's party on. All right, let's go to our consent calendar tonight. Counselor President Starr, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Oh, yes, I just lost them. Thank you. Okay. So the items on the consent calendar are items A, Resolution, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to sign peer court intergovernmental agreement; Item B, Resolution, authorizing the finance director to sign amendment number one to coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund grant agreement 8015, the Meadows Pump Station and cost of support; and Item C, Approval of June 20th, 2023 Regular Session Minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? And I am pulling A for discussion. Any others? Counselor President Starr?
Okay. I move the Kaiser City Council approve Consent Calendar's Items B and C.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt the Consent Calendar Items A, B, and C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no? Motion passes unanimously. Item 9A, I had a question on this one and just for clarification, and this goes to either Mr. Wood or Mr. Johnson. So this is an agreement with the Marion County Juvenile Department. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
And this is an ongoing budgetary item for them? This is not by grant or other unpredictable funds?[1705.64]
That is correct, this is an ongoing budget item for the city. Marion County does not have dollars that they contribute to our program.
Okay, so this is something that, but, but the agreement for them to run it is something that they're willing to take on, but, and so they have, they have no, no funding it? This is hundred percent Kaiser funding?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And my other question is on Attachment C, it's on page sixty-seven of the packet, let me get there. Um, two B, it talks about offenders will reside within the boundaries of, the boundaries of the Kaiser community or attend Kaiser catchment area schools. I was curious why I said Kaiser community instead of City of Kaiser, because Kaiser community does not have a legal definition.
Yeah, I would agree with you. This is the county's agreement, it wasn't a big deal, trying to change it is somewhat difficult. They left us no time for little Scrivener things in terms of their timing with us.
I would like to note for the record, though, that it is inaccurate, and return that to them so they can correct it in future years.
I will let them know.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have people that attend Kaiser schools that are not citizens of Kaiser, would that make a difference in this?
As I understood, well, I'll go to Mr. Johnson on that, because it says, or attend Kaiser catchment area school. So if they're a student at any of our Kaiser schools, and, but they don't live in Kaiser, they still will qualify for Kaiser Peer Court?
Correct.
Okay. I read it right. Mr. Johnson just said I got it right.
Yes.
All right. Goal Star. Any other questions on this? Those are the questions I had. Council President Starr?
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R two zero two three, authorizing the City Manager and the Chief of Police to sign the Peer Court Intergovernmental Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the City Manager and Chief of Police to sign Peer Court Intergovernmental Agreement, and noting for the record that the reference to the Kaiser community should be City of Kaiser. All in favor, any, any further discussion? Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In, in the past, Kaiser United helped fund this, and there was, in our, in our board meeting we attended last week, there was a question how the Peer Court is running, so that's something that I would like to visit with somebody about at some point to figure out how that really is happening.
That'd be a great update. Mr. Wood, if you could get that to...
Definitely, we can, we can provide that.
Okay. To all of us and then to the Kaiser United Board.
Thank you.
Okay? Fantastic. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing no objection, motion passes unanimously. And it is a great program. Let's go to other business, let's see, that took care of that. Other business this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new oral matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Wood, does staff have any additional business for this evening?
We do not, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, anybody have other business to bring forward this evening? Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to float this across, and I really hesitate to bring it up, but I want to do it right. Now that the, the cows are installed on the roundabout, I just, and, and we've, we've clarified that the naming of the art is the council's purview at this point, and I just was wanting to float the idea about adding silly to Rosalie's silly cows, since that's how she always referred to them, and that's how they look. So I just wanted to, you know, find out what was involved with that and find out if there would be any, I have no particular emotional investment in this, so if this is at all a problem, I'm willing to drop it, but I wanted to, to float it as a possibility. And I, I think I also need Mr. Johnson's input on this.
Thank you very much. So the, the item is to, whether or not to change the, the naming of those, and just for clarification, the kiosk that is being designed, has been designed, it will be installed at Claggett Creek Park. As mostly talks about Rosalie Herbert Moore, does it talk about the, I haven't looked at the script, also to mention the origin of the name of the, of the cows? If it's on there.
It, it does say, it does say that she always referred to them as Rosalie's silly cows. And we do have to have that reprinted anyway, so that's, again, why I wanted to do this right, if it's a possibility.
Mr. Johnson, if the council wanted to take this up, what would be your recommendation?
I believe that the, the change in the regulations allow the council to name them, that's what council decided before, and you made that official change, so council's free to change the name.
So we...
Do we just vote on it? Do we need our...
Counselor Reed, you need this decision tonight?
Um, I don't think so.
My, my preference, because then we'd have to go through a little more formal motion, would be, we always like things on paper, you know, the attorney thing. So we will come back with a resolution if that's the consensus of council for next meeting.
Okay. So looking to council for direction on whether to bring this up under, on a future council agenda. I, I conversed with Counsel Reed earlier, and I've got a little less enthusiasm on changing it at this point. I'm comfortable with Rosalie's cows, but I will leave it to council discretion. Is there anybody else who would like to move this, sorry, bad pun? Oh, God.
I think it would be utterly useless to...
There you go, it had to be said. Does anybody else like to have this come back at the next council meeting?
I'm, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to support Counsel Reed's request to bring this back for discussion.
I agree.
I too would like to bring this back for discussion, yes.
Okay, looking for one more?
Sure, I agree.
All right. So I guess everybody else has the energy for it, so yes, please.
I didn't say every had the energy.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business this evening? All right, I guess the staff updates, Mr. Wood.
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Ms. Davis, Ms. Biset?
I have nothing, but I'd love for Melissa to introduce herself.
Ms. Biset?
Thank you so much for the warm welcome. I'm so happy to be here, and staff at City of Kaiser have been amazing the last week, so welcoming, so thank you.
Welcome aboard, happy to have you here. Chief Teague?
You know, it's coincidence or it's causal, but the last three nights we went six fireworks complaints.
Pretty nice. It's been a little quiet out there. I think it's pretty good to firework for this, we see we have light more, right? We got offshoots all over the time to see if we work the fireworks and we do these, we have to bring in fireworks. See what happens. I wanted to comment on Blast Camp, I will comment on Blast Camp, it is happening this year, we had our time on the venue for a while. We had our time on the venue in Kaiser, in Kaiser. I was hoping to tell you the exact date, but we've been around at least once, registration dates, I don't know if it was either of them, because the news there isn't that it is happening. I also wanted to comment on Peer Court, I guess for the public that might be listening, if no one else. Peer Court is, that's a name that we have right here in Kaiser, it's a diversion court, has all the other names, for example, it's called sanction court. It's a court for which, I think we all feel very good, it's a court for which young people, juveniles, who commit a low-level crime, as the first crime they committed, are able to go to court, it doesn't, it doesn't land on their record, and their cattle, and their peers, peers who beat out justice on them, and practice sometimes, there's no justice in juvenile, to beat out on, very effective program for kids like I was, for example, I'll get that, as you know, later. It's a good thing, you have to support it. It's, it's a cheap process, forty-five thousand bucks a year, but it's exceptionally worthwhile.
Thank you so much for that, and I also want to commend Kaiser Police for the public service announcements that have been going out regarding the, asking people to be courteous about and cognizant of the timeframes around the use of legal fireworks, there is no timeframe for the illegal ones, just in case everybody's wondering, but they, I think they've been very effective, and I've been happy to share them out on my social media as well. So we'll be thinking good thoughts for everybody having a safe and enjoyable Independence Day holiday, and go see the professional shows, they're really spectacular. Thank you so much for that, and look forward to the announcement for Blast Camp, that finished, that fills like that, very popular. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Lawyer?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Witham?
Nothing further tonight, thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, let's go to council member reports. Counselor Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, since last city council meeting on June twenty-first, I attended the YMCA Executive Committee, I attended the Family Building Blocks Capital City Live Concert with Lee Bryce. On the twenty-second, I attended the Percy Wrap-Up Event, I'm excited about next year's event. On the twenty-third, Stead Corp Annual Golf Tournament with Kaiser Chamber Exec Cory Filardo and Claire Geran. On the twenty-eighth, YMCA Board of Directors Meeting, and on, also on the twenty-eighth, the Kaiser Rotary Installation Banquet, and this past weekend, the St. Paul Radio.
Thank you so much. I think that tells us there's a whole lot going on in our community, not just in Kaiser, but in our area. Thank you so much. Counselor Geran?
Well, thank you. So I did, I was a president of the GAC, the Government Affairs Committee for Counselor Cross, and the Kaiser Fire Department did a little presentation, and I learned some new stuff. The, they now have a ambulance at the Marion County Clear Lake Station, and I didn't realize that, and they, so they have two people per shift out there to expedite any service in the north end of the town. So that was, that was nice to hear. They, they do a lot of mutual aid calls, they say about ten percent of their calls go to Salem and Marion County, and they're reciprocal, so it's, you know, and from my office, I often see Marion County, our, City of Salem's ambulance is coming into town, taking care of stuff that, that Kaiser is out on other calls. So, you know, I, I see it happening both ways, and it's kind of nice to see that everybody's working together to get things accomplished. So there was also Darrell Fuller at the GAC, I meant, Darrell Fuller is a, a member of the Kaiser Chamber, and he's a lobbyist. He talked about the City of Salem payroll tax, and I don't know if anybody's heard about this, but it's all, it's going to affect everybody that works in the City of Salem if this happens. So it would be good for everybody to get involved and, and at least find out the information on this, point-eight percent tax that, for me, in my business, if anytime we do work in the City of Salem, we'll have to pay that tax, we'll have to track that tax, and we'll have to, it's just another paperwork nightmare for us, that work in the city, along with actually paying the, the, the cost of that. So please, everybody get involved and find out if that's a worthy thing to, to back for the, you know, we don't have any say in it, but we can talk to people that we know in Salem. Then Thursday evening, I was at a retirement celebration for Sheriff Joe Cast, that was really interesting to see all of, all that he's done in his thirty-one years as a police officer, and, you know, being able to wish him a happy retirement, and just see everybody that he's touched was, was a neat, neat event, so that's what I did.
All right, thank you so much, and I would like to join with you in congratulating Sheriff Cast on a remarkable career of public safety and service for our community, and wish him all the best in retirement. As I said earlier, retirement means you're just tired again doing stuff you want. Thank you so much. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attended the Kaiser Rotary Installation Dinner and also attended the Community Dinner, so, great taco salads.
That was really nice. All right, thank you so much. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still at awe at the number of people that helped put everything together at the Kaiser fortieth Birthday Party. I can't say enough about all the people that did so much to make that all happen. I, I sat there this last week and reminisced about where we were, and I just wanted to count all my many blessings, all the blessings that we have in Kaiser, so many wonderful people that made all that happen. On the twenty-eighth, of course, was the Kaiser Community Dinner, appreciate the number of people that came out and helped with that, we served two hundred and forty-seven people. Next month is our, our summer hot dogs and hamburgers, so I'll be on the six-foot grill with, cooking hamburgers, I'll have...
Unraveling weather.
...burns clear up to my elbow, so, yeah, it's okay. Of course, I tended to, it's a sacrifice I'm willing to make. Attended the Kaiser United Board Meeting, there's a lot of good things that are happening there. We, again, it's, it's pretty humbling to see all of the things that go into making Kaiser such a beautiful place. And I plan on being out of town for the Parks Board Meeting, so if there's somebody that would be excited about going to that next Tuesday, let me know and we'll talk about it.
Looks like you got one. All right, Counselor Starr is covering for Parks.
I had, just one other thing, we're going to miss the institutional knowledge with Tracy leaving, looking forward to Melissa working and learning those things, and Tracy, we love you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Housman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you to Counselors Reed and Kohler for your organization of the fortieth birthday party, it was a wonderful time, and a lot, a lot of smiles, a lot of enjoyment through both days, really, in all the events, so. If I may, please enjoy this commendation. Your semi-regular middle school report, like high schoolers, just a little smaller and a little younger. I've learned that the Salem-Kaiser Public Schools is instituting girls and boys soccer teams within Whittaker Middle School and Claggett Creek Middle School for the upcoming academic year, and counselors, I cannot tell you how popular those are going to be. Whittaker and Claggett could easily get a hundred boys and probably seventy-five girls out for soccer. It's, you've all seen it surely in your communities, in your cul-de-sacs, it's an incredibly, incredibly popular sport around here, the high school programs have gotten incredible traction of late, now that it's at the middle school level, the game is going to blossom, and with that is going to come student interest. Just really, really good foresight on the part of S K P S, so I'd like to commend them for that, but also, I, I just think there are going to be a ton of very happy middle schoolers and their parents this upcoming academic year, and we could all use a little positivity like that.
I, I know a couple of turf fields that when they go to construction will be very popular, indeed. Thank you very much.
It's all fine and parcel.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things, the Kaiser Homegrown Theater is opening the Book of Will on July fourteenth, and that will go for three weeks, so I invite you to visit the Kaiser Homegrown Theater website for tickets on that, it will be fantastic. Also, the Kaiser Heritage Foundation will have their Volunteer Appreciation Night on July twelfth at six P M. in the patio of the Cultural Center, so that will also be a fun event. We also, Mayor and I, attended the dedication of the Gilbert House renovations, and that was a lot of fun. It was, it was, it, we had both brought our kids there when they were little, and so it's, it's fun to see that continuity throughout the generations, and it just keeps getting better and better, and the, the community support is really impressive, so that was a lot of fun. Public Works Fair was a fantastic event, that was, that was just great fun, and especially so close on the heels of the fortieth birthday, you guys have been busy, I really appreciated that, and it was, it was just a really great time, and it's so interesting to figure out what's involved with Public Works, and you, you guys do such a fantastic job of community relations and that, that was just a really fun event, and thank you very much for putting that on, it was great fun. And then finally, I wanted to call your attention to our new art in the council chambers, this is, this year's, this is what the Kaiser Public Arts Commission bought with their remaining funds for this year, and so this is sort of in celebration of our dog park, and we, Kaiser loves our dogs, and so they're, they're really, they're really fun, so I invite you to take a look at those, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I noticed, we've got one more panel that I'm looking forward to, the Arts Commission also bringing some more art into the chambers here. Just a couple of things to bring up to speed on, the Willamette Valley Council of Governments Legislative Committee, of which I'm a member, has been working on several things through the legislative session, and I'm happy to report that House Bill thirty-three ninety-five, which included additional funds for all the councils of government in Oregon, passed. Five million dollars will be distributed among the six councils of government, which will allow for additional planning staff and capacity at all the COGS. We have so many things coming at us, Mr. Witham alluded to some of that having to do with housing, but there's more bills that came through, and especially related to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, doing more rulemaking on climate-friendly equitable communities, hang on, here's another ride, to see what additional requirements come forward from that. So planning staff, especially for, even, we're considered a larger city in Oregon, although we are by no means a large city, so this is going to be a huge lift for so many cities across and all of our members. and all of our members, cities, counties and special districts across Oregon. Congratulations, well done to the Mibeleammit Valley COG who led the way to get this through all the way to the end zone. On the last side was House Bill 2662, which we supported, which was to do a study for the West Extension. This is the commuter rail that goes to Wilsonville. This was a proposal to do a study to bring it all the way into Salem. Every jurisdiction on that line wrote letters and testified in support. And Representative Mannix and the team worked very hard to get it all the way through and it just didn't make it across the finish line. Fear not, however, we, those of us involved in transportation policy have asked the Council of Governments to look into what it would take to convene all of the stakeholders and start doing that work here locally and work with Metro, which is, Wilsonville is in the Metro Council of Governments, and start having those conversations to see if we can get a jumpstart on the 2025 long session. This is not a short session bill that we would try to bring next fall or next January in 2024. So we'll keep on it. The other thing I want to bring up to speed on is the, the work of the Mibeleammit Valley Area Commission on Transportation. The Steering Committee met. We're starting to work on the Oregon Transportation Request for a two-year work plan. Tammy Kuns and Jacqueline Green came and observed there. So what we're trying to do is comply with the request to have a work plan on what is, what are the acts we're going to be doing? How can we be involved in informing the Oregon Transportation Commission on projects important to us, to our businesses, to our commuters, to the residences in our community? So stay tuned for that. We're working on getting a draft out there. Good news. So at the last SCATS Policy Meeting, that's the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, there was a proposal to add unprogrammed funds for the shortfall for our Verta Lane project over here, which we all know we desperately need to do a full upgrade for the roadway, for stormwater, for completing the bike lanes, completing sidewalks. And the SCATS Policy Committee unanimously approved the resolution to provide an additional $704,293 of federal funds. And I really want a huge thank you to Mr. Wood and Mr. Lawyer for sharpening pencils and finding the additional match from our funds that would be necessary and actually an overmatch. So thank you very much for helping this project stay on course and move forward. And then we will go to town on making sure that as we get the preliminary engineering and right-of-way done, that will be good to go with funding for construction. Great job. And finally, a couple other pieces of good news. Not so much right here in Kaiser, but there were a number of our partner agencies that did find some of the requests in what is affectionately known as the Christmas Tree Bill, House Bill 5506. And there's two projects in East Salem, the El Campo Soccer Field and East Salem Community Center HVAC systems that were funded. So if you have time to read through that very lengthy list of projects, I think it was like 50 some pages, happy reading or use a search like I did and you can cheat and find the lines you're looking for. So that's good news there. Finally, I was able to attend the Catholic Community Services 85th Anniversary Event. And this was a fantastic evening featuring Father Greg Boyle, the founder of Homeboy Industries in Los Angeles. And then Suave Gonzalez, who is from, I believe is the Chicago area, both came and talked about the programs that are in place and the incredible success in helping people as they move out of life in prison or in other situations that are very difficult and into lifelong success. And just finding that space. I love this quote here, "Kinship is not serving the other, but being one with the other." Very powerful evening. The video is available online. Go check out this on Catholic Community Services. I appreciate this was open to the public and it was people from all of our community attended. One last thing. I attended the Celebration of Life for a former city counselor and just an amazing community member, leader, and the community optometrist for many years, Dr. Michael Gaynor. That was on Saturday. And thank you to Scenic Valley Vineyards for hosting this beautiful event. It was extremely well attended. They saw people keep streaming in. They're like, I think we underestimated how many people would come. It was beautifully organized by Joe Van Meter, former city counselor and a member of the Kaiser Fire Board. I believe he's the chair. We heard from family members, from the people who knew him in school, optometry school, Go Boxers at Pacific University, Little League from McKeon Rotary, Vicki Jackson, Dr. Cynthia Strawn, his partner, who then purchased the optometry office. And of course, there was no discussion about Mike Gaynor without talking fishing. And even his boat was there for us to enjoy. So thank you to everybody who came and honored the legacy, the memories and the encouragement that someone like Mike Gaynor leaves for all of us on how to be a truly caring, compassionate, problem-solving partner and community member and a friend to so many. We will miss you, Mike, very much. That's all I have this evening. Oh, I did. I'll bring that up later. So let's go to Agenda Input. Next Monday, we will meet in a work session. It says 7:00 PM. Should that not be 6:00? Okay, 6:00 PM work session. And we will be doing an overview of Kaiser Station. It was pointed out in a number of our conversations that not everybody on council has the whole history of Kaiser Station, Area B, Area C, Area D. What is that? How did we get there? And more importantly, to give everybody on council and people in the community who have moved here in the last maybe five to 10 years, you know, what we're talking about. So as decisions are made going forward, we're starting from a much more level playing field of information. So thank you to Mr. Witham, who will be organizing that primer for everybody. And that will be, will begin at 6:00 PM, July 10th. On July 17th, we will meet at 7:00 PM in regular session. And then we'll skip ahead to August 7th and meet at 7:00 PM in regular session. Is there anything else for the go-to-the-order this evening? All right, folks, the time is 8:45 and we are adjourned.